This conference will now be recorded.
Informally with staff and invited guests, the board encourages members of the public to attend sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. First item is to discuss the formal agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review it? Any questions, comments? Commissioner Webber's here. Anything? Okay, we'll move on then. First item anaerobic biodigester feasibility on page three. And Monica gets to take this one. Anaerobic biodigester feasibility. There we go.
Can you say that three more times?
No, I can't. That's the problem. I just got it out once.
Yeah. So this project, or discussion I should say, started about a year ago and it was with North Coast Regional Solutions, Jennifer Purcell, reached out to the county along with Business Oregon in regards to concerns that the city of Astoria was having for high-strength organic waste as a result of the seafood processing plants and the breweries and the impact it was having on their wastewater treatment facilities. And so she contacted the county to see if we would be an interested stakeholder in this project. And after further discussions, we explained to her the issues that we are seeing countywide with our septic waste and the fact that the haulers are not able to take their septic to the cities and are having to travel outside of the county to dump this waste. And so we began reaching out to a number of stakeholders that included the cities and the cities that are participating in this are Warrington and Astoria. We're also working with Regional Solutions, DEQ, and Business Oregon. And then Northwest Natural and Energy Trust are also participating in this process from the energy side aspect of things. And then we also have different business owners who have participated from both the seafood processing plants, the breweries. And then we also, in the very beginning, had a number of businesses such as Duana, sorry, Trails and Recovery, Warrington Fiber. So we reached out to a number of businesses that might be able to have some input on this project. And then we had a refined group that kind of wanted to stick with it and kind of say, yes, we're interested and we want to participate, where some just said, well, we're interested, but we just don't really have time right now. So the community stakeholder group continued to move forward and discuss what it is that we're looking for. And it got to the point where we really needed to determine the feasibility of citing an anaerobic biodigester in Clasip County, and if so, what that would look like. So our stakeholder group, sorry, one second. Okay, thank you. So our stakeholder group, we got together and we drafted an RFP to determine the feasibility of it. And we posted that RFP back, I believe it was in July. And then we received them and we went through the scoring process at the end of August and into September. We had seven firms submit proposals to us. And our community stakeholder group, again, it was a smaller group, but consisted of both local government agencies, state agencies, and private business. And we went through an interview process for three of them. And those interviews were conducted on October 15. We followed up with some clarifying questions of each of them. And then we scored the proposals. And that process was completed on the 20th of October. And the firm that the community stakeholder group will be bringing before the board for recommendation or for approval of a contract is Jacob Engineering. And so this feasibility study, they're going to be looking at a number of things, including the types of feedstocks that might be able to contribute to this biodigester project, the types of energy that might be created from this. And I thought that it was kind of perfect timing because in last week's work session, Gail brought up Goal 13, which talks about renewable energy sources. And this is a potential renewable energy source, whether it's through electricity, which is why Energy Trust is involved, or whether it is through natural gas, renewable natural gas. And that's why Northwest Natural is involved. And so what this study will be doing is they'll also be looking at where in the county would a facility such as this be able to be cited? And would it be a single site, or would it be multiple site locations? They'll also be participating in the community engagement process to make sure that we're hearing from the community in regards to having one of these sites and what the community is looking for in regards to having one of these types of sites. And so there's a number of aspects, and it's estimated to take approximately six months for this feasibility study to be conducted. During that time, we'll be continuing to reach out to the community stakeholders, the community at large, trying to determine what additional feedstocks that could be added to our list that we already have. And then again, clarifying what the actual energy source will be. So we just wanted to kind of provide you with an update on this project and answer any questions that you might have about the project as a whole.
We have any questions? I see Commissioner Toyoka and then Commissioner.
Thank you. Well, you know, reading through this, I know you said stakeholders, but it's an expensive proposal or study that they're proposing. Who are the real benefactors, immediate benefactors of this? Is it just the individuals will be utilizing it for the excess materials? Or will the taxpayers see a true benefit? Because if you're looking at taxpayer money to fund the study, what is the benefit for the taxpayer, for the constituents here?
Yeah. So in regards to the cost of the study, there are a portion of this will also be up to 50% of this will be paid for by grants. The county has proposed using some of the ARPA monies to pay for the feasibility study because this does have to do with infrastructure. And then we'll also be asking some of those community stakeholders, whether they're private businesses or the cities themselves, to also to make contributions. So in regards to the community benefit, we're looking at the potential of job creation and then also additional types of economic development benefits by having this facility in our location. The other piece of this that they'll be looking at when they're doing this feasibility study is that energy piece of it. And that's something that they'll be providing business case analysis on as to what we as a stakeholder group want to do with that energy that's created, whether that is keeping it within our own community, whether it's selling it for credits in other places, or whether it's for, there's conversations about different types of fleet vehicles that are charged through this energy source. And then the other question that you had in regards to community benefit is, in some of these instances, right now, for the haulers, for the septic haulers, they're having to go to Rainier to dump their septic. And they were allowed to be dumping 3,000 gallons a day. And that has recently been reduced to 2,000 gallons a day. And so from an environmental health perspective, trying to find a long-term solution to being able to do something with that septic, because if at some point Rainier shuts it off, then they're going to have to be traveling even further, which means the less amount of pumping that they're going to be able to do here locally, and therefore the impacts of leaking septic or failing septic tanks. In addition to that, the seafood processors and the breweries, some of the cost impacts to them in regards to being able to do business, whether it's the permits through DEQ, or whether it's the hookups and such that they are having to do to the cities for the wastewater treatment facilities, we don't want to have a negative impact on the economic development possibility within the county as a whole. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
It does. You know, and I likened it to, you know, in our business, we have waste oil, you know, quite a bit of it. And we have to pay to have it trucked out to Portland area to properly recycle it, reuse. And that's just a business expense. We can't do it locally. And in my mind, I was like going, well, I don't want to do a feasibility study here to set up, you know, waste oil recycling in Clasip County at the taxpayer's expense. I just kind of equated it that way. Are we making tax or requesting taxpayers to pay for a business expense, you know, or should, if in that case, should the stakeholders, the businesses who will benefit have a participation in the cost of the study?
And that's, you know, that was our intention of starting this group and involving those community stakeholders, those business owners, because there is a benefit for them. And so having them be a contributor is, you know, something that we would like to see of them.
Thank you. And one last note is, as we go through this, you know, and I know there was an energy component there. And I know it's a total sidebar, but you know, we're looking at carbon sequestering and energy and all these things. We brought up this and there's an energy component. I keep going back to like the old, you know, the algae farming and the algae, you know, they sequester what, 400 times more than our trees locally. And there's also biofuels that come off of those. So concurrently, wouldn't that be a similar study or, you know, a proposal to look at something for our community?
I can look into that, but that's like, you're talking, you're talking way above my head. I'm just starting to understand the biodigester concept. So there's a reason I didn't go into chemistry.
Commissioner Thompson, you have a question?
I did, sir. Well, Commissioner Toyoka, thanks for raising the issue of whose costs and whose benefits. I will say that when I came to Astoria and was having a meal outside and had my nose wrinkled, I had a local person tell me that that fish processing plant was the smell of money. So it doesn't have to be like that, though. What, I come from a long line of organic farmers, and a big compost pile was just part of what we did. And in my mind, this is a really a more systematic form of composting because we have to have it. That waste has to go somewhere. It's a cost of doing business. It's a public good. And anybody who looks at all of the garbage and litter knows that we as a society have to do a better job of addressing that. And so I think this is an excellent step. I spoke with the Assistant County Manager because I said, well, Warrington and Astoria are good. What about Seaside? And of course, true to form, she was way ahead of me and had already been working with them so that the needs of people down in Seaside are considered as well. And as somebody who has used a septic tank every minute, I've lived in Clasip County, I want to tell you, I need to have that stuff hauled away and preferably someplace close by. All of it has to be affordable. All of it has to be ecologically sustainable. So we're doing that. And for me, this is the happy marriage of ecology and economy. So I really like this idea. And I'm pretty sure the county is going to keep it as reasonable and cost-effective as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments? I thought that Monica did a great job summarizing exactly what the benefit of this project is. And it's certainly needed. It has been permitting for wastewater, for seafood processors, and for other industries has been more and more challenging. And it will only get more and more challenging each year. So us working with them to try to find a solution is exactly what we should be doing. So I 100% support this.
Great. So just to make you all aware, we did notify Jacob Engineering that they were selected as the top firm. And so we're beginning to go through the contract formalities. And it is our hope to be bringing this before your board. I'm going to have to work with Teresa because of the limited number of board meetings in November, but it's my intention to bring it before you in November. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Monica. Next item is the statewide planning goals overview, page 35. Our community development, Gail Hendrickson, is here. We have 90 minutes scheduled for this. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Gail.
Okay, thank you, Chair. And hopefully, we should be able to get through this in less than 90 minutes. Teresa, I have a presentation. So if you could make me the presenter, please. And while we're waiting for that, last week, or two weeks ago now, we had a discussion about Goals 1 through 9 and covered a lot of information. And I know last week, we actually went into more detail for Goals 6, 8, and 13. So today, we're going to pick up with Goal 10. Wrong screen. It's my Halloween theme. Much better. Okay. So today, picking up with Goal 10. Goal 10 deals with housing. And I know that housing has been of concern to us from the time I started here in 2018, and I'm sure going back even further. But with Goal 10, our only job is to provide for the housing needs of the citizens of the state. So not just ours, but everybody else in the state apparently as well. But Goal 10, we have to remember, isn't just a goal that happens in a vacuum. It has to be consistent with all the other goals in our plan, which include Goal 14, which is urbanization. And that really directs all higher-density housing and most of our housing needs to be built in the cities and the urban growth boundaries. And that's the way, that's really the whole basis of our planning system here in the state, is that we're trying to channel growth to urban areas where there's more services and infrastructure available to service residents. So in 2019, we completed our Housing Strategies Report. And that was a project that was done in conjunction with the five incorporated areas here in the county. And you'll notice as you, if you've ever had the opportunity to go through that report, that a lot of those recommendations are focused on cities. And again, that goes back to Goal 14, which directs that residential growth into the urban areas. Knowing that the study was only completed going on almost three years now, but I would suspect that some of those recommendations may be out of date and some of the data may be out of date simply because of the effect of the pandemic on our real estate market here and throughout the nation and the world, and how work, remote work has changed where people are able to live and want to live. So at some point, as we move through our process, we'll want to maybe review those as much as we can, just to make sure we're working with the most accurate information. One of the other things that came out of that study, and I know that the board has heard it repeatedly, is that STRs or short-term rentals are having an impact on our housing availability and our housing cost. And so thinking about all those recommendations and the concerns that we've heard coming from community members, the Planning Commission, since the study came out in 2019, has twice gone through it and sent some recommendations to various boards who were in place at that time, once in April of 2019, and then again in July of last year. And to date, we haven't had any opportunities or any action taken by the board. But one thing we would want to put in our big-ticket thinking queue is, is that something that the board maybe in the future does want to go back and revisit and take another look at those recommendations from the Planning Commission? And a couple of, more than a couple of things to think about here, as we look towards policy issues and big-ticket items moving forward, is over 80% of our land in the county is zoned for resource land. That's farm and the forest lands. And residential growth is really restricted in those areas under state statute. So we have only a limited amount of land in unincorporated county where we can really guide future residential growth. And I know we want to really step up to the plate and meet our housing need and provide for our citizens, but we have to also recognize and be cognizant of the fact that we have just a very limited supply of that. And a lot of it's in floodplain or geologic hazard areas and things like that. So we're having to balance a lot of different issues when we talk about housing. So another question that we want to think about as well is knowing that Goal 14 is going to push housing development towards the cities and our urban growth boundaries, how do we form a cooperation with the cities to help them increase their housing supply? And maybe they have to redraw their urban growth boundaries to accommodate that. But having that discussion with the cities to see what role the county can play to help them meet their needs and their requirements under the statewide planning goals as well. We're going on to short-term rentals. We are in the middle of our moratorium and we are having our second community meeting on this issue on November 12. But as part of this ongoing discussion that we're having with community members, we will be talking, you know, about where we permit short-term rentals and the regulations that go with them. But maybe on a bigger scale, we maybe do need to give some time to the question of, are short-term rentals really impacting our housing market and availability? And if so, to what extent? And then if there really is a true impact that's happening, is it really appropriate for the county to perhaps consider a limitation where short-term rentals might be? So that's just another thing that we need to keep in our back of our heads as we're working through the short-term rental process as well. Also, looking at the recommendations from that housing study and thinking about what different types of housing we need in our unincorporated areas. So we often think of single-family housing as being the most desirable, but sometimes it's the least affordable that we can put out there. We can look at things like duplexes or triplexes or multifamily housing, but then we also have to think, well, what services do we have available to support that housing that's more intense? Most of our unincorporated area is on septic systems, as we were just speaking about earlier. We don't have sewer systems, for the most part, in unincorporated county. There are a few exceptions, being Arch Cape and also in the Westport area. But for the most part, we don't have that utility infrastructure available to us to be able to support more intense or dense housing. So another thing about balancing thing that we need to think about. And then Goal 6, if you remember back a couple of weeks ago, that's our air, water, and land quality goal and tying into septic and water and all those things. If we're going to put more demand on the land, how are we going to make sure that it's capable of sustaining that much development when we can't provide the urban services that it would be required? So not to make it sound totally dismal, we do have some options available to us. For example, where we have our rural agricultural lands, the RA 5 to 1 and 10, we have the option to maybe upzone some of that property to require smaller minimum parcel sizes. And that would, instead of requiring a minimum five-acre size, would allow us to drop down to a two-acre size. So now, instead of one house on five acres, you could get two houses on five acres. So that's something to think about because that is something that we have control over and could complete pretty easily. And then another thing to think about that is required by Goal 10 is we need to look at substandard housing. And a lot of our housing stock is about, about 70% of it was constructed before 1990. So we have an aging housing stock. We have homes that are maybe less energy efficient, that cost more to upkeep. And speaking from what we see coming through on some of our code compliance cases, some of it is horribly substandard, things that you would never think that people would be living in, but they are because they don't have any options. And so is there a role for the county to take on substandard housing in addition to what we do through code compliance and thinking about what that role might be moving forward? I shall stop there. I see Commissioner Thompson has her hand up.
Well, and that segues nicely. Thank you, Planning Director. What about homelessness? What about the unhoused? I mean, housing never used to be inclusive of that, and yet we see so much of it. And the marginally housed, I mean, tents and tarps and RVs on sawhorses and all of that sort of thing. I mean, is that subsumed under this category? Is it housing and unhoused? I don't know. I don't know what the current thinking is. I hear some heartbreaking stories, and I'd like us to consider how we address it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I've made a note of that. And there is language in statewide planning Goal 10 that does talk about, and these are literal quotes from the document, government units, but I think that we have the ability through our housing goal to look at that and options for, and I can't think of the term, but like helping hands type housing that would come through with the wraparound services and things like that. I think we have the ability to address that because housing is housing. And then we would look at that type of housing in conjunction with our other goals to make sure that there's services available to support that. And maybe that's not the appropriate place is to put it in a rural area where people may not have cars. We have limited public transportation. They need to be able to have availability to services. So we need to think about all of that in conjunction with all our other goals. But I have made a note of it.
Director Hendrickson, I see that Commissioner Webb had a question.
Okay. First, what might be a stupid question. Was this, this screen that we're looking at, was that included in our packet for tonight? Or is this the first time we're looking at this?
It's the first time you're looking at it because I only just finished it about an hour and 28 minutes ago.
Okay.
My goal, we will, I will make sure that you get a copy following the work session today.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think these are wonderful. I really do. I think that, you know, as somebody who is tremendously familiar with this process, wow, I think you're really zeroed in on the issues that are facing us under this goal. And we don't always talk about, you know, we're not talking about them enough. So I think this looks like a wonderful checklist for us for how do we address housing in the coming year or two? There's some such important issues here. It's a great framework. You're raising some terrific issues. I mean, and I wasn't aware, actually, that the Planning Commission had, for instance, checked in on the housing study because I'm always very uncomfortable with the lack of action that our city partners in the housing study seem to be taking in terms of recommendations and implementing those. So good on you, Gail, for this is just, I think, as usual, coming from you, it's brilliant. It's very, it's doing something that, to me, is intrinsic in a good comp plan, which is taking the long view and taking a look at our own infrastructure and is it ready for the mission that we must be doing in the future. This is great. This could be, for me, this could be a work program for us for the coming year or probably two or three. So thank you so much for this. This is just wonderful. Just wonderful. Thanks so much.
Thank you. You're very welcome, Commissioner. Any other questions on Goal 10? All right, seeing none. We're going to move on to Goal 11, which is public facilities and services. And this ties in actually quite well with our previous discussion this evening about the anaerobic digester and that whole about the anaerobic digester and that whole process that we're going through and that Monica's been working on. But Goal 11 really talks about very specific public facilities and services. Most obviously, water and sewer are public safety and public health services. Well, maybe not public health, but health services are parks and recreation facilities, energy, communication, and then the things that government provides like permitting and public works. And unincorporated areas are very restricted under Goal 11. And part of that ties to our sewer system or lack of availability of sewer. And we are actually prohibited, except for very specific circumstances, to allowing the extension of sewer systems outside of urban growth boundaries. And that is why so many of our dwellings are hooked up to septic systems. We're just not permitted to bring those urban services out to the rural areas under our statewide planning system. And that's a very important thing to always keep in the back of our heads because as these rates go up to pump our septicage and to deliver our septicage, it is becoming a burden on homeowners. And we'll talk in a few minutes about some of the energy burden households and how that ties into Goal 13. But this is just another piece of that. You know, we want to provide affordable housing. We're prohibited from providing sewer systems, except in very limited health hazard situations. And we're not supposed to be putting in urban-level services to support urban-level uses. And that's what we have under statewide planning goals, and that's what we have to live with. So really, our only sewer system that the county operates right now is out in Westport, but we don't provide any other water or sewer services to our residents. We do, most of our water in the unincorporated area out on Clotset Plains is, was, and is coming through the city of Warrenton. They do have their moratorium in effect right now on new connections and expansions outside of their city districts. So again, that's having an impact on us here and our development in unincorporated Clotset County on the Clotset Plains area. Water districts also supply a large portion of our residents in unincorporated counties. But for the most part, a lot of it is private wells and private community water systems. And we know that we're running into concerns where private wells dry up during the summer. Some are just starting to go dry. Some of the systems are not properly functioning. For example, out in the Elderberry area, there is a community water system that repeatedly has had issues. They are continually underboil water notices, and they're just having difficulty with their water supply out there. We also know that most of our fire districts are primarily volunteer-operated. And we know the concern that that caused a few weeks ago when the governor put in the vaccine mandate, and there was concern that we would lose our volunteer firefighters and that public safety would be compromised as a result of that. And the other thing that we may find, I haven't seen it too much yet, but we may find this moving forward, is that as people shift where they're living, and we have more people coming to our county permanently who have come from urban areas, there is this expectation that there's going to be a certain level of service. And that's not the job of the county to be providing those services. We are very limited in what we can do, and we are very restricted in what we can do. And we have minimum requirements for what we are required to provide to our residents. You know, it's public health, public safety, and we have planning, we have voting. Those are required requirements from the state. But there's not a requirement or even an allowance for us to start running sewer and water districts, for example, or going around and paving everyone's roads in the unincorporated area. So under our big-ticket items, you know, just thinking of things off the top of my head as I was putting this together today, we know that public safety is very important, and we do have a professional sheriff's office with paid staff. But, you know, how can we and should we, what is our role in supporting our volunteer fire departments? Because they do provide a very important service to our residents here. And then we have to, again, go back into our Balancing Act and think about how do we take that demand that we may be getting from residents for either increased services or higher level of services, but yet still remain compliant with all the other goals, especially this one and Goal 14, which is urbanization. And then we've already talked quite a bit about septicage and treatment this evening, so I won't elaborate on that. Commissioner Thompson?
Sure. Thank you. Well, I wonder if this is where we can add something about wildland fires because the state is in Senate Bill 7, I think it's, I can't remember the number, could be 762, could be a different piece of legislation. They're looking at the wildland-urban interface. And your point is that we're having residents move here, not realizing that they are joining the wildland-urban interface and what that means. And it's not local fire districts, really, who provide all of that firefighting on that interface, but others, the State Department of Forestry and others. It's complex. It's different, the costs associated with it. So something about wildland fires someplace in this, please.
Okay, duly noted, Commissioner Thompson. And yes, you're correct, it's Senate Bill 762.
Any other comments, questions?
Okay.
Hey, Gail.
All right, thank you. So that brings us up to Goal 12, transportation. And this goal actually has been recently updated. We updated it back in 2015 when we adopted our new transportation system plan, or TSP. And when we are looking at transportation, it's more than just roads and cars and moving people from one place to another. We're supposed to be looking at all modes of transportation, whether that's biking, or pedestrians, or public transit, and also taking that in conjunction with our goal to conserve energy, making sure that we're meeting the needs of people who may be transportation disadvantaged, and making sure that we're keeping that flow of goods and services that supports our economic goal nine, keeping that moving as well. And we know that when we do have a disaster, whether it's a winter storm, or it's going to be the earthquake, or the tsunami, or wildfire, whatever may happen, it could just be a really bad accident. We know that our flow of goods and services on our main roads in and out of the county are going to be disrupted, sometimes for a few hours, sometimes in the case of a major disaster, it may be weeks or months before we have that flow restored. And I'm not going to talk about bypasses or anything like that, but we just need to make sure that we think about how we're going to handle all of that because we are, we are very limited in how we have access to and from the county. And so thinking about our big look forward over the next 20 years, a lot of our transportation here in unincorporated county relies very heavily on single occupancy vehicles. And that's just a fact of life because we live further out, we have to drive further distances, we probably own more than one vehicle if we're fortunate enough to be in that situation. But there are a lot of people who aren't. And as I mentioned earlier, we have, we do have mass transit that goes out to the Napa-Swenson area, for example, but it's pretty limited hours and pretty limited opportunity. And so someone who may not have a set schedule or has to work hours when the bus doesn't run and doesn't have access to a vehicle is in a very tight situation. There's also, you can, you know, obviously, ride and walk, you can walk your bike and ride. You can ride your bike and walk down any road, anywhere. But if we want to encourage safe activities where families might feel comfortable bringing small children out, we need to think about options for them as well. And then also looking forward, so, sorry, skipping ahead to my second question here, does the county have a role in providing mass transit or helping to support it or increase it in rural areas where people may need access to employment but have a disconnect between how they get there and where their job is? And then it also has an impact on economic development because as we look at this, you know, we obviously want to encourage our local businesses to grow and expand, but conversely, they need to have a sound transportation system that's going to allow them to move their goods and services around the county and outside of the county. And, you know, there may be a role that the county may want to step in and identify specific transportation improvements that would have to go through ODOT, most likely, but that may help support our economic development goals as well. So I will stop there on Goal 12 and pause for questions.
Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I have a question. As I recently learned about the issue of Teaven at our Westport location where we're doing, paying a lot of attention to the ferry and our new park and the Teaven Dock, et cetera, that they are thinking about putting in some kind of a rail spur. And I wonder if, you know, there was a time when there actually was a very vigorous rail system in this county. I've heard people in our tourism industry talk about how wonderful it would be if people could ride the train from Portland to Astoria for the day and spend money, of course, and then go back home. But there's a lot of, I don't know, historical reminiscing about that. Do you know, Gail, or anyone else know if there have been any recent studies about the feasibility of restoring or suggesting the resurgence or some use of rail in Clotset County? Do we know, does anybody here know anything about that?
Yeah, Commissioner, I'm not personally aware, but I see Monica has some information.
Based on those conversations, and I don't know if Don wants to chime in as well, but, you know, we did have conversations with Teaven's representative when they brought this spur, rail spur project before us. And, you know, they said that they would see added benefit as well to the rail transportation system being able to come back into Astoria. And they are having conversations with, you know, the rail system in regards to getting to where they're at. I do know that there, based on, based on those conversations with Teaven as well as other agencies, there would be significant infrastructure that would have to be improved because there are currently, once you get past the Wanamill, which is where, as far as the rail currently goes to, there are like alder trees growing in the rail tracks. And so there would be significant improvements and investment that would have to take place. But I know that, you know, the Teaven representative that we were speaking with, you know, was hoping that something would come further from, once their project gets completed.
Okay. That's interesting because I hear from a lot of the local business people in Astoria, especially the folks at Tongue Point. I've heard it from the seafood folks, lots of interest in how, and the port, of course, rues the day that the rail connections were lost. So this is something I think it would be very cool for us to kind of get a little smarter about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I see Commissioner Thompson and then Commissioner To.
I'll yield to Commissioner Toyoke. He's got a longer tenure in the county, but after him, please.
No, no, I was just gonna comment about Commissioner Webb. You know, back in the day, rails, the rail system ruled here in Clotset County. Tongue Point was very, very active, Port of Astoria, huge commerce center. And if you look, want to go online, you could even read stories and see things about the Daddy Train that went from all the way Gearhart and Seaside, train stations that would bring families to Seaside and Gearhart, you know, especially the fathers would come on the weekends, and the families would be here for weeks at a time staying at the beach. So, you know, the rail system has a long history, but I think the one to really, like you emphasize, as you said, is Tongue Point and the Port of Astoria, you know, how much commerce, how much can we gain for this, you know, for the county? If you look at that rail and how much potential there is there to reopen that rail, is it still viable? And I believe that rail system is, you know, I think through Teaven especially, that study, if you read that, and you look at other studies, there's many, many benefits to rail, you know, environmentally and cost of transportation. So a lot of factors would make it appealing to look into rail. Thank you.
Well, and to piggyback on that, of course, we've heard about the Daddy Trains. On the other hand, what I've been told is that the 96 floods wiped out the infrastructure. So in terms of resilience, in terms of looking at air pollution, I keep raising the comment that tourism is supposedly, you know, a significant portion, and it absolutely is. On the other hand, it brings pollution because people drive to get here and drive around here. So we get additional sources of pollution from the driving that's done. And that's a great concern to me. I want to talk, too, about public safety because what I see more and more, given driver behavior, given traffic density, driven, driven behavior is what I would call it, there are more and more accidents everywhere because drivers are apparently less and less patient, and there are more and more of us driving for more and more miles. So I don't know how we tie in because, because public safety is one of our major concerns as county commissioners, as a governing body. And the aspect of the transportation system that relates to public safety and relates to the environmental well-being of our county is really important to me. I didn't know where to put in the idea about broadband. It could go in economic development. It might go public facilities and services because if we're talking about the county partnering to build a middle mile, then that's an aspect. So there's overlap and integration, and not to make your job more challenging, Planning Director, but to me, those, they play on each other. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I'm reminded of the work that Jack Kreider, who is the Port of Astoria Director, and some of the other Port of Commissioners were looking at trying to reestablish rail and that type of transportation. They would have loved to have done that, and I would kind of defer to the work that they had done, and it apparently was not feasible. But I agree that it would be fantastic to have that reestablished. Okay, I will turn it back over to Gail.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I've forgotten about broadband. So yes, I think Goal Nine and probably Goal 11 are good places to have that discussion. Okay, so now we are moving on to Goal 13. I know we talked about this a lot last week, so I'm going to spend just a minimal amount of time on this. Really, our goal with Goal 13 is to conserve energy, pretty straightforward. But that means we need to think about our land uses as well, and how does where we put things affect our use of energy? And so in 2020, the Oregon Department of Energy did a biennial energy report, and it talked about energy burden on Clotset County residents. And these numbers do include residents in both our incorporated and unincorporated areas. They didn't have a finer-grain breakdown than this. But within the county, 23% of our households are energy burdened. And what that means by energy burden is that any household that is spending more than 6% of their income to purchase energy is considered energy burden. So the numbers from this report list the annual electricity cost for a household as just over $1,200, the average natural gas costs at about $600, almost $30. And then it also looked at vehicle miles traveled per household. So obviously, the further you are away from stuff, the So obviously, the further you are away from stuff, the more you have to drive. And so the average number of vehicle miles traveled was over 21,000 miles per year. And then if you look at the maintenance costs for your vehicle, that's another 3,500. And it figured out that there's an average energy gap for those energy burdened people of about $422. And then it also broke it down by poverty level. So it identified the federal poverty level for a family of three as earning just over $21,000, almost $22,000 per year. If you break that out by 2,080 hours in a standard 40-hour work year, that comes to 10:44 an hour. So, and we know that our minimum wage here is nine, I believe it's 9:25 now, it might be up to 9:75 per hour. But there's definitely a cost that comes as we move, as people move further away from urban areas or job centers, that their household costs are going to go up. And we know that where we are right now with life, the universe and everything, that all of our costs are going up, whether that's food or energy or basic clothing and other needs, shelter needs. So it's possible that as we move forward over the next 20 years, depending on how everything evens out in the end, that we may see a higher number of households that are energy burdened. And so trying to figure out the smartest place to place our commercial centers in unincorporated county, job centers, if it's industrial type of jobs, for example, or where we're gonna concentrate our efforts to place more housing in unincorporated county, we also need to bear in mind that the further away residents are from these other centers, commercial and industrial and employment, that we will have an impact on their energy costs as well. So just to think about that. I know we talked last week about putting electric vehicle charging stations and other conservation members at county buildings, and we've talked about the recycling programs as well. But then also to think about is, to what extent is it the county's responsibility to not, we obviously have an obligation to make sure that we make smart decisions in our land use for our residents, but do we also have an obligation above and beyond that to do additional education and do more to promote energy conservation on an individual basis as well? So just something else to think about. And I will pause there before moving on to Goal 14.
Any questions, comments? Okay, Gail, looks like we can move on.
Okay, thank you. So Goal 14 is urbanization. And as we talked about in conjunction with our housing Goal 10, the statewide planning system is set up to encourage residential growth and pretty much growth of all types to be placed in those urban areas or the urban growth boundaries. And the cities, not the county, but the cities actually have an obligation in their comprehensive plans to ensure that there's a 20-year supply of land to address those needs, whether it's housing, employment, schools, parks. That burden is really placed on the urbanized areas and not on the rural areas in an unincorporated county. And so the last time we did an urban growth amendment in Classop County was back in 2017, where we worked with the City of Seaside and they were going through the process of moving their schools out of the inundation zone. But really, the cities, and I think they will start this now that the census has been completed, but we are probably going to see over the next 20 years expansions to the urban growth boundaries. And so we need to be prepared because as the county, we will be working with the cities to help expand those boundaries and approve those boundary changes. So it's not that the county can't do anything outside the urban growth boundary that we're just going to be a place of farms and trees. We still have some local control and some ability to do things. So you'll remember back in Goal 11, which was about 15 minutes ago, that we talked about how we can't expand sewer systems out into the rural areas unless there's a health emergency. There is the possibility that the county could apply for a goal exception to that Goal 11 in order to expand some of these public facilities. But we are gonna have a high bar with the state because we're gonna have to show them that any surrounding agricultural lands or forest operations are not going to be impacted. And it's more than just the physical immediate impact of running utility lines out to a piece of property. It's what happens after those lines are in place and development comes along and says, oh, there's water, oh, there's sewer, oh, this is a great place to put a subdivision. And now we've got a subdivision of 30 homes coming in next to a dairy farm and we've got 30 households calling code compliance and saying, my neighborhood stinks, what are you gonna do about it? And so those, as Commissioner Banks would say, unintended consequences. And so we always need to be mindful of that if we ever were to make a decision to apply for a goal exception with the state and see if we're gonna extend some of these services out there. The other exception that we have is when it comes to industrial development, and that's a very strong employment center, possibly for the county. Right now, we have very minimal, we have a very minimal amount of land that's actually zoned for industrial development. Some of it is out in Bradwood, a lot of it is in the miles crossing Jeffers Garden area. And that is almost all of our industrial land that we have. And so thinking ahead 20 years, thinking about what our economic development and our growth is going to look like, how we are going to encourage our businesses to expand and making sure they have opportunity to do that, because it's going to be very hard to put an industrial park in Cannon Beach. It's gonna be very, very difficult, or Astoria, or any of our other cities, with the possible exception of Warrenton. It's gonna be very difficult for them to find the land to have an industrial supply of land. So I think that there are probably some opportunities that we have in unincorporated county where we can take advantage of this in our urbanization goal and think about where we might have appropriate places that we would want to consider for possible designation as industrial land. That's just actually kind of exciting to think about. And then also thinking about our unincorporated communities, Westport, Napa Swanson, et cetera. You know, we do have the opportunity to put increased public services or more intense uses out there, and that's a discussion that we want to think about over the next 20 years. Where would those increased services and density levels be appropriate? Is there a willingness on the part of those communities to accept that increased development and increased densities in terms of housing? And how do we begin that community conversation over the next 20 years? And yes, that's all I have for Goal 14, so I will stop there for questions.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Well, some smart person said to me, you know, the county owns some land at the intersection of Highway 26 and US 101. Could there be a parking structure there that became maybe housing on top and then parking tsunami inundation safe, but could be a transportation hub so that people could drive to the coast, park there, and then take mass transit, could bicycle from there, could have a variety of things? Is that at all feasible and would that fit under Goal 14, something like that? Not to put you on the spot or anything, but...
Without knowing the specific property and where exactly it is, if it's down by that junction, there's a good chance it's in a flood plain, might be in a floodway. So I won't make any commitments at this time.
Well, but there are ways to construct, I used to do a lot of looking at what they did in Japan, and what they're doing is building so as to allow the water to flow through. So you can have parking structures where the water can flow through. It becomes mostly safer. It's safer. It isn't absolutely safe because it is in a high-water area of various kinds. But if it could be constructed in such a way, it might have other benefits and it might be an acceptable compromise for a variety of concerns. That's my only hope. I just, I'd like to put some blue sky ideas into this process. And I think the rail idea is a wonderful one, but I also, I'd also like to see something to deal with parking, because you mentioned Cannon Beach, and I'd really like to see some parking alternatives that work for that community.
Any other questions, comments, Commissioner Toy?
Just one question slash comment for Gail on looking at urbanization and even tying it into Goal 10, our housing. You know, I think the, if you look at the urban growth boundaries, that's how we're gonna achieve more housing supply potentially. Because if you look at, you know, we have to have 20-year land supplies, places like, you know, Falcon Cove, Cannon Beach, Gearhart, Seaside, as far as, you know, affordable and market-based housing, that land just does not, is not available. It's not, it doesn't exist. If we, in the current, within those, you know, City of Seaside, City of Warrenton, City of, sorry, City of Gearhart, we have to look at the urban growth boundaries and say, okay, this is where potentially we could have affordable and market-based housing for that supply. So hopefully, I don't know, are we reviewing that potential to tie into Goal 10?
If I understood your question correctly, Commissioner, we have not, well, first of all, we haven't heard from any of the cities about what their plans are. There are a couple of options, so they can expand their boundaries or they can look at increasing densities in the areas they already have so that more housing units could be built there. I'm not sure, maybe I didn't completely understand your question.
Yeah, because even like, let's say, example Gearhart, even if we increase density in certain areas, that's not gonna provide affordable housing. It just, it won't. The homes that'll be there will be expensive, you know, because we're near the ocean. So you know, in this particular case, would we look at urban growth boundaries on the east side of Gearhart, the highway, as a potential for that affordable and market-based housing in the future?
I think that we would want to have that discussion with the cities. Ultimately, it will be the city's decision regarding how they zone the property. For example, if Gearhart were to expand east of 101, but then zoned it for, you know, large lots and, you know, and had, I don't know if they have a minimum housing size requirement, but if their minimum lot size is, you know, half an acre or three quarters of an acre, that has an impact on housing prices. And those are things that we can't necessarily make Gearhart do, but we could certainly encourage them, have discussions as part of our growth boundary. But in the end, I'm not sure how much teeth we would have to make them actually move forward with something like that.
Okay, no, I was just asking a question.
Yeah, no, it's a good question and one I hadn't actually thought about, so yeah.
I guess what kind of intrigues me is, and I know that we have a mechanism for this, for density rights transfers and ways to actually remove zoning from parcels and put it in other areas. I don't know if it expands outside of an urban growth boundary, if that's something that we've actually pursued. I'm just familiar with Warrenton, they actually have industrial land that probably, you know, that's constrained and probably won't be developed. Can that be transferred to another more suitable piece of property? Can you remove some of the residential and condense it to another piece of property, you know, maybe just outside their growth boundary? I guess that's something I'm interested in.
Yeah, the county does do that on a limited basis and it's primarily in the Classop Plains area. So we have done that where property owner has voluntarily worked with a developer to come to an agreement and the property owner who is transferring their development rights will then have the property rezoned to restrict future residential development until it goes into an urban growth boundary. And then the city at that point can change the zoning back and basically give them back their credits, so to speak. So if anybody's not familiar, just a quick example is if I have a piece of property that's zoned RA5, which is a five-acre minimum requirement, and I have 25 acres, theoretically I could build five homes on my property and partition it. If somebody wanted to, they could work with me to sell them the rights for those five houses, and that person would come and take my development rights for five homes to their property. And then in return, the county says, okay, we're gonna let you have smaller lot sizes, you've got to cluster your development together, but in return, you get those extra five units that you normally wouldn't have. And so it's a completely voluntary program, it's not mandatory, and we have not done it, one of these since I came here in 2018. So it's probably been, I think, close to maybe seven or eight years since we've actually done one.
Are cities doing it?
I don't know about our cities, Chair, I'd have to ask, but I don't know.
It just seems to make sense and it would, you're actually not then having to go out and create more zoning for one thing or another, you're actually using the existing zoning and just reapportioning it. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Well, staff has done excellent work and I think the Commissioners have come together to have a variety of good discussion points way back when we were getting together on occasion with the other electeds within the county. And I'd like also to have us think about, is it time to reconvene a broader meeting of the county electeds to talk about the housing homelessness issue because it's compelling for all of us and I'd like to see us work together more effectively.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments, questions? We'll go ahead and turn it back over to you, Gail.
Okay, thank you. All right, so at this point, we get a little break. Okay, good, because this goal does not involve us, we don't care. So we are just gonna skip right over that puppy. And apparently, Goal 16, too. So the next four goals, which are the last four goals, are dealing with basically natural resources associated with water. We've got estuarine resources, coastal shorelands, beaches and dunes, and then our territorial oceans. And as we move into these next four goals, I could spend 100 years going through the intricacies, which, first of all, I don't fully understand at this point. There's, they're very complex and even staff who has been here for quite a while, we're still working our way through these because they're very detailed. In the end, what it basically will come down to is that when we see permits for these types of resources and these types of areas, we rely very heavily on state and federal agencies that are also regulating the same areas. And a lot of that's going to be done through Department of State Lands, DSL, and through the Army Corps of Engineers. And they have a lot of say ultimately in what goes on in these areas, especially in the estuary areas. And these goals all relate to our coastal zone management plan. And that is a program that the state participates in, but it's a national program. And it is basically a program to protect these resources and to ensure that all of our rules and regulations are compliant with each other and with the state, federal, local levels to, basically to maintain coordination with the primary purpose of maintaining the ecosystem. And so these, our uses in these areas are in a hierarchy. Our, as I said, our overall goal is to maintain the ecosystem. If that can't be done or isn't being, a proposal comes in that is not, does not have that as its main objective, then the next thing that we would move down to is, is it a water-dependent use? So for example, a marina would be... So for example, a marina would be a water-dependent use because you really can't put a marina on dry land. It just tends to, to not work well. If the use that's coming in is neither maintaining the ecosystem or water-dependent, then we look at, is it water-related? Is it something that kind of needs water to operate and inherently, you know, has some tie to the water? Or is it completely non-water dependent and non-water related? And that would be the lowest use that would be in our hierarchy. So every time we get a permit in for one of these uses, we, we have to go down through this checklist. And even though the county, as I said, is required to have this goal and it's comprehensive plan and we have to adopt policies, our language is coming state, pretty much straight out of the statewide planning goal and OAR and ORS. And again, we're going to rely pretty heavily on state and federal agencies for their expertise in reviewing these permits. But one thing that we should think about with regard to the estuarine areas and resources is we do have a lot of local dyking districts, especially along the Columbia River. And like all other volunteer organizations, you know, some of their members are aging. Some of them just don't want to be involved anymore. Sometimes they have difficulty recruiting new members to serve on their boards. They don't have the funds to maintain facilities. And these facilities, especially along the Columbia, are a large part of how we have drained our land and created the agricultural land that we have now. And we have obviously homes and, and farm operations that are benefiting from the work that was done, you know, decades ago. But now is in danger of not being maintained or falling into severe disrepair to the point where it may not last much longer. And so I know we just went through the dissolution of the Skiponon Water District and how we, you know, pulled apart their assets and everything. But is there a role or, and if so, to what extent should the county be working with these local dyking districts as we move forward? And is there a way that we can help them and help them maintain their facilities and their organization?
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. If I could ask a slightly broader question. The dyking districts are special districts. So are water boards, special districts. The fire protection districts are special districts. I like your question a lot. I would like to see it applied more broadly to all of the special districts operating within the county. Because I think it's a broader issue. So I really appreciate that you brought it up. And I'd like to expand it to include every special district that operates within the county, especially the, especially the ones that are at the forefront of these planning issues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And I, I think your point's well taken about special districts in general. I do think that dyking districts are unique and I just attended a dyking district meeting or annual meeting two weeks ago. And it's a 90-year-old individual taking the minutes for the meeting and it's three or four people that are getting together. They have a very small budget. And yes, I think on the, on the surface, it looks as though it's just some farms. And if those dykes fail, it's just going to farm, flood farmland. But it's not true because the hydrology actually connects to a greater area and it could flood a lot of homes. It could flood businesses. You know, these, these are public safety issues. And I happen to have met with the Corps when they came out here two years ago to complete their review and inspection of the Classop County Dyking System east of Astoria and beyond. And, and they couldn't even complete their investigation because they couldn't get through a lot of these areas. They were overgrown. They were not, you know, not maintained. And we don't even know what the condition of, of some of those dykes are. So I am, this is, I'm glad that Gail has put this and highlighted this as one of the areas for us to discuss because it really is important. And I just don't think you know until there's a catastrophic failure and we see some real damage. And that, that's, you know, I hopeful, I hope that we can get out ahead of it and not have that be the case. Commissioner Thompson?
Sir, I agree with you. I've been raising this issue at board meetings for years, before you were on the board and since. So now that we've got this ARPA money and we've got a chance to do some, address some backlog, because I think this is a backlog issue. I agree with you very much about the potential for widespread damage. And so if we can put a tickler in our budget, budgeting, strategic planning process to make sure to include that, I, I think that would be, that would behoove us. Thank you.
I agree with you, Commissioner Thompson. I actually put that on, when we did our survey on our strategic plan. I actually added that as one of them that I think we should look at. Commissioner Toy?
I'd just, I'd like to echo both your sentiments and the fact that, you know, if you look at it, these districts, special districts, dyking districts, we are talking about public safety. And, you know, last I checked, part of our charter was, as county board was to, was public safety. So yes, when you're asking about county to be involved in those, I believe it's, it's part of our charter to do so.
And I think this is all a balance because, you know, we do, at the same time identify habitat and estuary enhancements that can take place in areas that dykes can be breached safely. So this is something that, working with, you know, Columbia River Estuary Study Task Force and others, we can kind of evaluate as we go. But until we know exactly what's there and what the condition of the dykes are, it's just not possible to do so. Commissioner Webb?
I think that, that there is this large issue and please let me know if you're tired of me mentioning it. But the, the fact that, that we lack some basic information about our natural resources and our man-made infrastructure that, that, that is really challenging us in all of these areas. You know, the floodgate issue to me, which is very closely related to, to this whole issue is the same way. There's just so much that we don't know. And that perhaps be, just like any good engineering project, first, we have to have better information about what exists. And so I don't know how you, where into the comp plan that would go, Gail. But, but, but we have this dearth of information. You know, we don't know always the quality and quantity of the water in our streams. We don't always know about how effective fish passages are. We don't always know the whole issue around native species, both, both aquatic and, and terrestrial. There's just so much we don't know and that being able to put, I, I think that that was one of the reasons I pushed so hard for the environmental component of the strategic plan. Because a lot of actions are dependent on how much we know and we don't know a whole lot. So, you know, everything is related to everything else. Thank you.
Your point is well taken, Commissioner Webb. Any other comments, questions? Gail will move on.
Okay. And just to go back to Commissioner Webb's question for a moment. You'll see as we move forward in our comprehensive plan and some of the policy recommendations that staff will be recommending is that we do, we obviously won't complete all those studies in time for July of next year to incorporate new data and everything into our comprehensive plan. But you'll begin to see a lot of recommendations where staff has identified areas where we do need to do more analysis. And that needs to occur, you know, probably from the time we adopt our comprehensive plan over the next five years after that. So that when it comes five to seven years to do our next review of the plan, we will have data that will actually be meaningful and help us make sound decisions on any revisions that might be needed. Okay, goal 17 is really goal 16, but for coastal shorelands. And again, it focuses on that hierarchy of protecting the ecosystem, then giving preference to water-dependent, water-related, and then non-water-related uses. But one thing that goal 17 incorporates into its language is the need to emphasize the relationship between the coastal shorelands and the waters and the hazards that usually accompany those locations. Things like landslide, coastal erosion and coastal flooding that we sometimes see down here as well. And so it's very important that we make that linkage in our goal 17 language. In particular, when we have rural areas that have coastal shorelands, goal 17 encourages us, if the area has not already been developed, to retain those areas for farm use, for timber harvest, for aquaculture, and then other water-related and commercial and independent industrial uses. And here in Classop County, everything that's identified as coastal shoreline under goal 17 are the lands that are west of Highway 101. And so that's how we define it in our comprehensive plan. Another thing that goal 17 emphasizes is public access to your coastal shorelands and coastal waters. And so one question for the, the board in the future is what is the county's role in providing that access and maintaining that public access? And I know we've had some discussions about that already in relation to Cove Beach and the emergency access points down there. But there are also, you know, portions of the mechanicum that are considered coastal shorelands. And do we have an obligation to provide access to those? And thinking about other potential beach access points as well. And then we've also heard quite a bit from community members in the southwest coastal area about the need for stronger regulations to protect coastal shorelands in that particular planning area. And our, our work that was done to identify those shorelands is from the 1980s. It was work that was done, I believe, by Crest at that time. And so relating back to Commissioner Webb's earlier comment, you know, should the county be going forward and doing more detailed studies in all these areas to update and enhance and improve those reports that were done almost 40 years ago? And then we need to think then about to what extent we want to add additional protection to those resources. Especially, I know that we've had a lot of discussion about, we don't want to place more restrictions on property owners than we've already placed on them. But if a community were to come forward and say, we voluntarily will accept these regulations and additional protection requirements, is that something the board would want to consider in the future?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, absolutely. Commissioner Thompson?
Talking about my neighborhood and talking about strong, deeply held convictions about what's right and what's not. And the issue gets very complicated when we look at points of view and whose point of view and whose property rights and who gets to have a say about those. This is a very contentious arena. So when we look at this, how do we balance the goal of the coastal shorelands with competing, competing rights and points of view? So I think it would be good to do additional work. I think we need to go into this prepared to see very strong opinions and, and be prepared to deal with a lot of conflict. This is not going to be an easy one. On the other hand, you know, why not, right? It's the right thing to do, but with eyes wide open on this one, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I have kind of a basic question and that is, when, when one looks at the shoreline, so much of it is in parkland or in cities. There's really not a whole lot of it that is outside of those areas. And so we're getting pressure, you know, from, I mean, poor Commissioner Thompson who has to, I, I didn't mean to say poor. Meant to say, I know that this is a real challenge in her district. And, and so I'm wondering, you know, from a process standpoint, what, what is our responsibility? Do we do, is this something we need to sit down with the cities and with the folks at, at Fort Stevens? And, you know, I, I have a kind of a process question about this. Because, I guess because for me, the issue is that, that Oregon has a strong, strong and magnificent tradition of public access to beaches. And, and it's something we value highly, absolutely highly. And in some places, like in Seaside, in some places, the beach is very deep. And so access to it can be, can be very well organized. In, in the southern part of our coast land, the beach is not always so deep. And so it's very precious and it's, and there is development, residential development right up against it. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a real challenge about how we can, we can address this. And I, it seems to me that we ought to, as the county, take a step back and say, what do we need to provide? You know, both for the public and for our own residents? Without it interfering with the quality of life for those landowners who live adjacent to the beach? I, I don't know if that's a question or not.
I think you highlighted a significant issue though. And I, I mean, I haven't traveled a great deal, but when I've gone to other states, Massachusetts or others, and then you see how their, their shorelands are treated in the private, you know, that you can't access areas.
That's right.
It, it is eye-opening. It's quite a distinction. Commissioner Thompson?
I love the sympathy. Thank you, Commissioners. So here's the thing. It isn't just people who, who live there. There are property owners. And so it's people who are full-time residents, people who are part-time residents, people who do short-term rentals, people who do not, and people who have a legal right to come and visit. And it's the mix of all of those with their sometimes directly competing points of view about what should be allowed and what should not be allowed. So unlike East Coast or Michigan or wherever else we are, people have a right. So I have a right. Okay, how does your right bump up against somebody else's right? And how do we negotiate those conflicts? Because not only are the people right up against it, the it is eroding and falling into the ocean. We've lost houses. We're going to continue to lose houses at an increasing pace. And that's just, that's just day in, day out erosion. That isn't a tsunami. That's it. Stopping, stopping talking right now. Complex, competing interests, directly opposing sometimes. So I think it's a noble cause. I think it's going to challenge all of us to deal with it in ways that resolve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any more comments, questions? Hey, Gail?
Okay, so speaking of erosion, that brings us to goal 18, which is beaches and dunes. So thank you for the segue. And to go back to Commissioner Webb's comment before I forget, each of the cities will have their own goal 17 that they will address those coastal issues on and coastal shoreline issues. So we need to worry, we don't need to worry so much about them, but we do need to make sure that our efforts are all coordinated. And that, that is a requirement. So. Goal 18, beaches and dunes, just what it sounds like. And basically the beach is considered anything that's west of the statutory. of the statutory vegetation line or the line of established vegetation, which other is further slandered. And that jurisdiction falls to the Oregon Parks and Recs Department, Recreation Department. And so they all have control over that portion. We have control over the dune area that would be to the east of that. And so part of our requirement is we have to go in and identify those beach and dune areas. We have to figure out appropriate policies and regulations for that. And we also have an obligation under Goal 18 to prohibit development in areas that are subject to either undercutting, overtopping by the ocean, or by ocean flooding. And so one of the questions I'm just going to throw out there for future consideration is, as Commissioner Thompson just noted, we do have coastal erosion here. And we're entering king tide season, and we have just had several days of very stormy weather. I don't know what it looks like down there. But I know last year around January, we were getting calls and pictures from property owners who had had huge logs of driftwood that had blown up into their houses because of that. And we have a very strong demand for coastal housing. And people want to build as close to the, as close to the ocean as they can. Don't know why, but they do. And as we balance those competing interests in, in the future, over the next 20 years, we may want to consider looking at increased building setbacks from the ocean, just to help people protect themselves from themselves, if nothing else. Because we, we know that the problem will only continue to intensify over the next 20 years. So that's my spiel about Goal 18. I'll pause again for questions or comments.
Any questions, comments? Okay. I'm not seeing any. So, Gail?
Okay, so we save the easiest goal for last, just to give your brains a break. And I appreciate your attention and comments and questions. Goal 19 is our most recent goal. We adopted it in 2012. Goal 19, I don't know if I said that. Yeah, Goal 19. We really have no say in this goal. This is all about state and federal projects. And we really have no input, maybe not input, but we don't have any control over it. It's focused on that area, territorial ocean area that goes out three nautical miles from, from the state border. And so basically, it's looking at where we're going to dump dredge spoils. It's going to look at discharge of waste products into the open sea, protection of marine life, making sure that we do protect areas that are important to fisheries. But again, we, as a local government, really don't have any policies or actions that we can take to have a meaningful impact on that, just in our comprehensive plan. So I have nothing for you to think about for that one. So, but if you do think of anything, please let me know. And so again, that could-
Yeah, I think we got a couple people that thought things. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, because wave energy is part of that.
I was thinking that.
Okay, good. All right. Just saying.
Yeah, and wave energy will be, be an item in the future. You're correct, Commissioner Thompson. We'll have very little say as Cl辛 County if something were to go offshore. But where that offshore thing connects to the county, that's where we'll have our impact. So.
Commissioner Webb?
Can I add cable landings to that, to that issue? Also, I do think that we have a responsibility for this goal in terms of our relationships with state and federal agencies. We just went through a process this week of taking a look at an island in the, in the Columbia River, which is administered, which I don't understand what that really means, but it's administered by the Corps of Engineers, for instance. And so we had to talk to each other. And, and I would really love to be able to have something in the county that ideally, I think it would be an actual staff position in the county manager's office that would be responsible for liaising. I think we do a good job as a county in the multi-county boards and committees and AOC-type stuff that we, that we communicate about. But I think that we, I'm not sure we do a real good job of communicating with the federal government and sometimes not with the state government as well. So I, I don't know if that belongs in the comp plan or in our strategic plan. I don't know, but it just seems as if we need to be watching. You know, we need to be watching what's going on out there. And I don't know how we do that. I'm just thinking that maybe we should be. My dog has just told me to shut up because then she'll get a chance of being fanned before 6 o'clock. So I'm out of here.
I appreciate the sentiment. I don't always think it's us. I think sometime it's the federal we hate on that doesn't, that isn't easy to work with. Just my two cents. And there's a lot of turnover. Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Just one more. If this could be posted on the county's website, I think this is a dandy presentation, and I'd like it to get more public exposure. Please.
I will make sure that gets done. So. And thank you again. I really appreciate your patience. This was a lot of information over two work sessions. And again, just thank you. And please, if you have any questions, please always feel to reach out to me. And I would be happy to get your answers if I don't know them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gail. And I agree with Commissioner Thompson's statement. I mean, this is a lot of information, very comprehensive and detailed look at every one of these goals. And I've learned a lot, and I think that we all have appreciated the hard work that went into this. So thank you very much, Gail, for all your hard work and appreciate the presentation. I think others will too. Well, we've got a few minutes, so we can go ahead and adjourn or at least pause until 6 o'clock. So we'll see everybody back for the regular meeting.
Did you get selected for jury Joanna?
No, they did not wish to put me on their jury.
Oh boy, their loss.
I know.
So Commissioner Quila, I want you to know when my dog hears you say this meeting is adjourned, she leaps to her feet and heads for the food dish, just so you know that.
I misspoke, that was, I didn't mean to throw your dog into a tizzy.
She was ready, she knows the drill.
Oh man.
Commissioner Webb's dog does too.
Okay, well it looks like we've got six o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. The Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for which the body so acts, is now meeting in regular session. Teresa, can we have the roll call?
Chair Quila?
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Toyoka?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
And Commissioner Banks is excused.
Thank you Teresa, we've had an opportunity to review the agenda during our work session. There were no questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thompson moves to approve the agenda.
I can.
Moving seconded to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify the aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next is business from the public, this is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except for public hearings, or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
Yes.
If you have registered to speak, please wait till your name is called, then give your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes to speak. Teresa?
Yes, Paul Putke.
Okay Paul, you can give your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Yeah, excuse me, my name is Paul Putke, my address is 91468 Smith Lake Road, Warrenton, Oregon. Commissioners, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak, my name is Paul Putke, President of Aspie Local 2746. I would like to talk about fairness. Over the past year, the county staff has engaged in market reclassification studies with the staff assistant position. Staff assistants make up a significant core of the county's administrative staff. Although their numbers fluctuate, the county employs thirty-some staff assistants, which account for over a quarter of our members. You will find them in most of the county's departments, from the clerks, to the district attorney, to the sheriff, and many more performing a wide range of duties. During this year, these essential workers have been repeatedly asked for information concerning their duties. Target dates for developer balls come and go. This study has gone through two contractors, each changing direction, and never seems to end. With each change in direction, our members are burdened with the unknown. How will the job change? How will the responsibilities change? How will their compensation change? Will their compensation be frozen? The truth is, they do not know. But I do know they keep coming to work providing essential services for our community. I can assure you without them, the county government would grind to a halt. With no end in sight for the completion, the feeling of resignation has become common amongst them. Is that fair? Is it fair to leave your employees and members of our community wondering about their future? So why am I speaking to this? Eventually this will end with what I believe will be a significant change in structure of the county administrative staff. Because of the extent of these market classification studies, I believe you will receive representation on their goals and findings by the staff. But what the staff will not tell you is the personal toll it has taken on our members, your employees. This will not be the last market study the county will engage in. Many of the positions in the county are old and need revision, not only to be competitive, but to create a productive working environment. I would ask you to ask these questions of staff. Why does it take so long to complete a market classification study? Why does the staff need to rely on two outside consultants who do not live in our community to do the work? How can this process be improved? And has this process been fair to your employees? My answer to that last question is no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you President Putke. Thank you for your comments, Teresa?
Yes, Pat Corcoran.
Pat?
Oh, good evening Chair Quila and Commissioners, my name is Patrick Corcoran and I live at 472 Pleasant Avenue in Astoria. Before I go on, Chair Quila, is it proper for me to comment at this point on agenda item 11, is that the last item in the agenda?
I think, yes you can.
Okay, and I'll go ahead, because I see later on in the agenda, the commission will consider removing Robert Strickland from the planning commission. And I want to be clear, I'm not weighing in on that decision, that's its own thing. But just in case, I'd like to offer a few words of acknowledgement of Mr. Strickland generally, as an engaged community member. And boy is he engaged, I've been in many meetings with Robert, nearly every time I've come away having learned something new and interesting and relevant. I've also facilitated meetings with Robert, and for those that don't know him, I think his communication style would be described by facilitators as forceful, might be a word. Anyway, but after the dust settled, there was very often very useful information and always very thoughtful. So if Robert's service on the planning commission ends tonight, I remain heartened, knowing that Robert is irrepressible and will remain engaged in community life and contribute his energy and perspective as new opportunities arise. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Corcoran, I completely agree with your comments. Teresa?
That's all the business from the public.
Okay. Thank you very much everyone, we'll move on to the Commissioner liaison reports, oh excuse me, I'm skipping the consent calendar, let's go back to the consent calendar, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Commissioner Thompson moves to adopt the consent calendar, Mr. Chair.
We have a sec.
One second.
Moving seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented, all those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we'll move on to Commissioner liaison reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you sir, well I've been, I've been doing a lot of work about AOC, so that, so the Clatsop County is visible, credible, and effective in the larger domain, and that continues, I just want to say that to people. And I'm grateful for my colleagues' participation in the AOC activities. Next month is the AOC Annual Conference, I hope you all will come because there's lots of interesting information, there's lots of chance to network with other county commissioners, and it's a chance that people get to know us and care more about us and want to include us in decision-making processes that result in additional resources available to Clatsop County. And so, in that regard, I will tell you that we've got meetings scheduled with Andy Smith to talk about water, we've got meetings scheduled with Andy Smith to talk about housing, very interested in that. Continuing the conversation with Senator Merkley's new aide, Betsy Emery, who's interested in what Professor Shine and Ian McDonald are doing to produce modular housing in Milwaukee, Oregon, and that's a positive outcome. I reached out to Representative Evans to talk about Senate Bill 762, thank you Planning Director Henriksen, that is the correct number. Looking again at how we can be more resilient. Economic development is the largest predictor of the overall resilience of an area, and once I found that out, in no small part because Patrick Corcoran helped me get smarter about what resilience meant. It's, it all plays together, that's what I want to say, so continuing that work and looking forward to moving into our strategic planning effort, because this is the first time to my knowledge, there has really been effective updating and incorporation of the experience of the commissioners and the staff and the community as we look to be more strategic. On Monday, Commissioner Banks and I met with, sorry, with Director Lyles, who's the new Oregon State University Cooperative Extension Director, and Wiley Thompson, his regional chair. So we talked about how can cooperative extension be more effective working with us, so we're looking at more strategic planning that way. During our meeting tonight, we talked about housing, I really want to see us meet with the other electeds so that we can have a more concerted approach to housing and homelessness issues in Clatsop County, I think it's really important. And I would love to see a multi- And I would love to see a multifunctional structure on that land where Highway twenty-six and Highway one oh one intersect, because if those films I've seen are correct and we can incorporate some of that Japanese engineering, we could have something that could withstand water flow, could hold cars, could hold people, could even have maybe commercial if we wanted there. So the mixture of relationships to produce both blue sky ideas and actual results on the ground, and I want to tell you, I can hardly wait till that biodigester starts operating. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Webb?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Toyoka?
Good evening, everyone. No, lots of projects in progress, but nothing to completion, so no reports. But, you know, just a lot of discussion with police, fire, first responders. Just want to appreciate them on that, because the whole vaccine mandate caused a lot of stress and consternation across not only our county but state. Just appreciate them and our hospital and, you know, medical care professionals for hanging tough and supporting this, supporting all of us in this community. Just can't overemphasize that enough, that, you know, mandate caused a lot of heartburn and a lot of veto and, you know, a lot of turmoil for a lot of people, but hopefully we can get past all this and back to normal. And the only other thing, I was working on some land use issues, especially the resiliency project. You know, just thanks to the staff of the county, you know, realization is months of work goes in from the staff to prepare information. And as we, as a board, we get to discuss it for a period of time, but when we change course of direction, you know, and go away from all that material work they've done, it is, it is still very valuable and appreciated, because the information, the work they did gave us the guidance to make that course correction. And I know they have, you know, especially with resiliency, there's a whole new course of action to take, but none of their work was in vain, and I think the county, all of us residents are better off because of all the fine work the staff is doing. So just wanted to say thank you to all that, and it does help us as commissioners prepare.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. I completely agree with the amount of staff time that goes into each and everything that we do and that we have presented our agenda. I did want to also echo the fire, rural fire departments and other law enforcement. We certainly do appreciate their service, and I was very glad to hear that we did not see interruptions or were not expecting to see any eruptions in the level of service due to the mandate, that there are enough folks that have been vaccinated and have remained in service, and that's terrific news, fantastic news. I did send that letter that I received from Bob Dorn, Hayek Maritime. It is, it is about a boat lift out, lift out at Tongue Point. He's asking for a letter of support for Connect Oregon funding. I apologize, it was on my work email, so I didn't, I know I had seen it, but it didn't get to you guys. I know that they need to have something by the twenty-ninth, and it would be, we'd have to kind of craft a letter, I think, from what he's given us. But Commissioner Thompson has expressed her support for it. I don't know what the, Commissioner Webb's got her thumb up. Commissioner Toyoka? Have you had a chance to kind of review that?
I did. I did have a few more questions, but in principle, I agree.
Okay. County Manager?
Yes, Chair Quila, members of the board. What staff will do is go ahead and take what was provided. We'll draft up a letter. We'll just send it out for the board for any final comments, edits, and then we will get that distributed tomorrow. So.
I appreciate, appreciate you doing that and the work of the staff. And I think that we certainly want to support something that is a real, real need here in this community with the closing of so many boatyards around the Northwest. There really aren't any assets like this for large vessels to be lifted out of the water and for work and repairs to be done. So it's important, I think, that this be brought to our community. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, and not only what you just said, Chair Quila, about its being of economic benefit, it lifts the boats out of the water so that any environmental pollution doesn't go into the water. They collect it and remove it. So it's, again, the economy and the environment working together. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And then the other item is, we do have a CREST meeting tomorrow. Our quarterly meeting will be tomorrow at noon, so I'll be attending that, and I will give a report at our next meeting. And I will conclude our liaison reports and move on to the County Manager's report.
Chair Quila, members of the board, so this has been a letter of support season for us, and so please bear with us as we get these, as you know, and you're sensitive to, we don't always have a lot of time to process them. So we muster all of our creative writing abilities and distribute them to your board and try to be prepared to answer questions. But they are coming in in droves right now. So be patient with us, and I know you are. So there'll be a couple that will come to you tomorrow. One, the Commissioner Quila just mentioned, and there's another request from Sunset Empire Transportation District for a grant that they are pursuing as well. So we'll provide some background information for that and a draft letter tomorrow as well. Most of them are all grant-related. It's just, there's a lot of federal grant processes out there right now. The other is that your board, Commissioner Webb, Commissioner Thompson, and others have mentioned the question about participation on the Board of Columbia Pacific CCO. And I just wanted to let you know that I do have a meeting with Mimi Haley Monday, just to talk about what the history of that is and what the options are to have Clatsop County represented as we move forward. So at least start those conversations. The other is that we have been talking about with the judge, district attorney, sheriff, a single access point for the courthouse. And I've mentioned this before, it's a security issue, not having a single access point, and having everybody that goes into the courthouse go through a magnanominal, just so we can make sure that the courtroom, the courtrooms in the courthouse is secure. We have Sarah Architect, who's been retained and is working with us. And we have, we have a schematic plan. And so I think that through the next budget process, we'll probably be talking about some investments in the courthouse to try to secure that facility, which will be good news for the judges and for all the occupants of the facility. We're going to be working on space planning and having a lot of conversations with the board about how we pursue space as we move forward. Geographic issues, making sure we have adequate facilities for all of our different types of services. So, so that will be an ongoing project, which will be pretty exciting. Staff is looking forward to that. And the only other thing that I'll really mention is, is that time of year where we're getting rain and there'll be landslides, and we had another landslide on the other side of the river today, and I only mention it because a number of folks who work for the county go over the bridge every day. And so, well, there'll be some minor delays as people have to drive about forty minutes out of their way to get here. So, and I happen to be one of those on occasion that will be subject to that. So, so that's all that I have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, County Manager. And, yeah, I point as well taken about the workload. I know that the county staff is doing it a lot, and we really appreciate. I certainly can try to help craft the letter as well with regards to the boat.
Chair, I'm just going to give you kind of a heads up that in the Friday update, I'm going to attach a really comprehensive project list that lists all the things we are currently working on. It's a much larger list than just the strategic plan list. It's actually all the projects. I just want to give you a sense of the activity that is going on, and it also has a status of these projects. I seriously, in my career, I haven't seen so much happening in such a short period. And so staff's doing well, I think that, but I just want to share that because it's an impressive list. So, thank you.
I appreciate you doing that, County Manager. I think it's important for all of us to see all of the activity, because we don't always recognize all that's going on. We certainly just see the tip of the iceberg, and there's a number of other things that are, that are behind the scenes and a number of staff members that are doing tremendous work. I also wanted to commend Commissioner Webb and Commissioner Thompson for bringing up the CCO discussion. That is something that I have noticed and felt was a glaring omission to not have a Clatsop County Commissioner sitting on the CCO. And I would love to hear what the results of that discussion with Mimi, our County Manager. That's certainly something that's striking to me, and I think that we need to have a presence on the CCO. And that being said, we'll move on to the business agenda. The Human Services Advisory Council Membership Recommendations and Approval of Revised Bylaws on page two oh seven. And I see Hannah Mather popped up, so I assume this is you.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. At the work session on October thirteenth, I brought to you two new membership applications to be recommended for the Human Services Advisory Council. A total of three vacancies were advertised. The applications of Rebecca Larson and Amber Bowman are recommended for membership for this council. Their terms will be of three years, both expiring February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. And in addition, there is a request to revise the Human Service Advisory Council bylaws. The most significant changes are as follows. Removal of the Executive Committee. Establishment of membership terms. Persons employed by contracted providers are now eligible for appointment as a member. Council members can submit minority reports if the intent is announced after the question is called prior to call for a vote. The report is submitted to the board in conjunction with the council's decision. And lastly, future amendments will need approval by the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. Should you have any questions, please refer to Monica or myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Any questions, comments? We've got a proposed motion. Appointments. Commissioner Thompson?
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve the requested action by the Human Services Advisory Council to appoint the applicants Amber Bowman and Rebecca Larson as members to the Human Services Advisory Council to each serve a three-year term, expiring February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, and to approve the September twenty twenty revised bylaws.
Seconded. Move and seconded to approve the appointment of Amber Bowman, Rebecca Larson, to the Human Services Advisory Council to serve a three-year term, expiring February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, and to approve the September twenty twenty revised bylaws. All those in favor signify with an aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, Hannah. Next is the Strategic Facilities Plan on page two twenty-one. And we have Dave with us.
Dave, our Capital Projects Manager should be on.
I see he's on.
He is on the, he's caller.
Okay, caller. Hey, Dave.
Hello. Welcome, Commissioners. This is a request to approve a contract for a strategic facility plan. This is something that we're excited about. I think it's going to be complicated process, but we've hired Sarah Architects, who's also helping us with the courthouse work. And this is the plan that will give us some guidance for, you know, a short-term guidance for one to two years, and then a five-to-ten-year guidance, and then also beyond that, twenty years beyond that, so that we can have some different stages of planning. You know, they're going to do an assessment, like a facility assessment of our buildings. They're going to do some space needs to see where we are right now, you know, how much space we have, you know, how much, you know, we're going to end up like in the jail that's going to be vacant next year. And then they're going to do some population and staffing analysis, you know, and projections to see based on population and what staffing we would need in the future. And then they're going to, you know, do some separate reports, you know, report for each building, what would be the recommendations for those buildings, and then an overall report of, you know, recommendation of where we need to go for, you know, either increasing space or making space more, you know, efficient, or using up, you know, land that we have available for new buildings, you know, just a whole strategic plan for the facilities for the next couple of decades. Sure you may have questions. Hopefully, I can answer them.
I see we have Commissioner Webb as question.
Yeah, actually, it's a request. Before, I mean, it's clear to me from the scope of work that they plan on, obviously, they're going to spend a lot of time meeting with our staff and doing their analysis. Before this project starts, I think it's appropriate for Sira to meet either collectively, actually, I prefer to be collectively, with board members. Because I think that we need to establish for this process, I think we need to establish some policy imperatives that we'd like to see included in their recommendations. And I think it's most appropriate for us to do that before their work begins, rather than to critique it as it's going along or when it's finished. And that's a process I'd love to see with a lot of the contracts that we cite, but I think that with facilities, we've talked a lot tonight about infrastructure, and this is certainly part of our physical infrastructure, but it also highly impacts our staff. And so I think there are some principles that we need to lay out for them that we'd like to see included in their work. Thank you.
Yes, we can certainly include a meeting with the board, you know, either virtually or in person. You know, they're going to do some workshops, so we could have one in conjunction with that or prior to that virtually, you know, maybe part of a work session.
So, Miss, sorry. I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Webb said. I like Dave's idea very much that we do it as a board, because I want to have the board members work together to do this. I appreciate the opportunity to participate in talking about policies for the board, for the staff, and for the community members as we go forward. This is a, this is a big opportunity, and thank you to staff for putting this out there and for making it possible for us to say, okay, insert us into this process, please, so that we can use ourselves most appropriately as your governing body. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other questions, comments? I'm perfectly fine if there's going to be a workshop, that the offer is extended to the Commission to engage as well, or to participate.
Chair Quila, members of the board, I think that's a great idea. I think getting your input about your desires and your vision for how the county, because, you know, facilities discussions also really overlaps with just service delivery. And so, you know, having your contribution to the vision of service delivery is important. So we will schedule that early in the process.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Because I did a lot of highlighting on this. This was a very good part of the board packet, gave me a lot of information so I could ask more questions. On page 228 of our board packet, it talks about additional services as needed, talked about traffic studies, hazardous materials analysis, geotechnical services, survey, inventory of furniture, furniture selection, and so on. I'm very interested in having us consider from the very beginning and not afterward, geotechnical hazards like storms, fires, flooding, earthquakes, tsunamis, and all of that. For me, that's foundational. Before we even talk about what services, we have to talk about the earth that those, from which those services will be delivered. So I, I'd like to weigh in on, on that point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Toyoka?
And then just as a follow-on to Commissioner Thompson is, you know, the only thing, and I apologize if I missed it, but was communication, tying in communications to facilities as well as cities, not day-to-day necessarily, but, you know, on an emergency basis, how would we tie them together? I didn't notice that there, but if I missed it, I apologize. But I think that would be integral if we're looking at the long term.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Well, it was such a good packet that I called Claquamas County to talk to some of my colleagues there, and they had nothing but praise for Sarah Architects. I figured they would be pretty good, but just for the record, Claquamas County Commissioners agree. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other questions for David? If not, we will need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move to authorize the county manager to sign the contract with Sarah Design and Architecture, Inc. in the amount of $160,000, and to authorize the county manager to sign amendments.
Second that?
Second.
It's been moved a second to authorize the county manager to sign the contract with Sarah Design and Architecture, Inc. in the amount of $160,000, and to authorize the county manager to sign amendments. All those in favor signify with an "I"?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item, item 11, consider removal of planning commissioner, or planning member, Robert Strickland, page 280. And county council, is this you?
Yes, sir. So, Chair and Commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. In July, you may recall that the Board of Commissioners and Planning Commission had a joint work session. And during that meeting, you all discussed a statement of roles and responsibilities for the Planning Commission. Your board held discussion with the Planning Commission and made several suggestions to those statement of roles and responsibilities. And staff subsequently took your feedback, as well as feedback from the Planning Commission, that they held at a subsequent meeting, and incorporated the recommendations and changes into a new statement of roles and responsibilities. Subsequent to that, that document was distributed to the Planning Commission. Five of the six Planning Commission members signed the statement without any modifications. However, one member, Robert Strickland, submitted the form with some modifications. I personally called Robert Strickland and asked if he would consider submitting a clean, unmodified document, but he declined to do so. Under the county's administrative code, section 3.5.2, your board may remove any appointed member by a majority of the board requiring at least three members to remove at your discretion. So we present this item tonight for your consideration to remove Mr. Strickland from the Planning Commission for failing to sign the statement of roles and responsibilities. I will note that other, all board-appointed committees and commissions will be expected to sign something similar to the statements of roles and responsibilities. We have staff has drafted one that is specific to all committees and board members. The one that you have in your packet was specifically for the Planning Commission. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for county council? Well, I just would say, well, Commissioner Toyoka, you got something?
Oh, just a question. Did every other member of the Planning Commission sign?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And do you know if they had a meeting and discussed the rules and responsibilities that was drafted by the county?
We add up, add up a future, well, add a subsequent Planning Commission member after the July meeting. And forgive me, I don't recall which one it is. It was either the August or the September meeting. The Planning Commission considered the draft. At that point, it was a draft, plan, statements of roles and responsibilities. They gave their feedback to staff. And as staff, we incorporated many of the comments into those roles and responsibilities. And so they had their opportunity to provide some feedback into that, that document.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I just, oh, Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I, I just wanted to appreciate what Pat Corcoran said. I mean, one of the things about living on the upper left edge is that we have an appreciation for eccentricity. And I, I don't know about the other members of the county Board of Commissioners, but, you know, that's, people have said that about me as well. On the other hand, these are the rules, and these are appropriate. One of the things that's having, happening with the Oregon Transportation Commission is that the role of the Northwest Acts is changing so that what we do is to act in concert with the OTC's work plan, and they have to approve our work plan. So it's, it's common practice, and it's the legitimate use of authority in these kinds of matters. So I wanted to make that comment. And, and it's awkward, you know, it's always awkward to do something that friends and neighbors don't appreciate. It's, that's hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And I echo that 100%. I think Pat Corcoran explained that and described Robert's contributions to Cl辛 County very well. I mean, I think we just can look at so many things around our story. Of course, George Brewery is, he had a big hand in, in what we see there today. And Robert, I've known for, for decades, and certainly respect him 100%. That, that being said, I know the roles and responsibilities is very standard. What we put together is a very standard document, it's boilerplate. It's something that isn't objectionable in any way. And I think it's unfortunate that, you know, Robert couldn't, could sign on. But I don't see this as removing someone. I see this as kind of him removing himself by not signing a clean document. So with that, do we have a motion?
Oh, yes. I'd like to make a motion that slightly, that slightly alters the wording. Can I give that a whirl? I move that the Board of Commissioners terminate Robert Strickland's appointment to the Planning Commission.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second the motion, assuming that county council agrees to the wording change.
The wording change is fine.
Okay. We've got a motion that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Commissioners terminate Robert Strickland from his appointment to the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify with an "I"? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we do thank Robert for his service to the Planning Commission and all he's done on his time there. So we will go ahead and move to the next, actually, we don't have a next item. We are done. So anything for the good of the order? Okay, we will go ahead and adjourn. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.